Welcome everyone to the business portion of our meeting tonight. If you all would rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
All right, before, actually we'll call everyone who's present this evening, and before I ask for approval of the agenda update, I think we're going to move agenda number, item number 11 and 13. We're going to flip-flop them to allow the closed session to take place first so that the pertinent staff can then leave while we're doing the policy discussions. We'll just make that one order change for the evening. So having said that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So made.
By Director Bullion, second.
Second.
By Director Franz, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six one. Moving down to personnel items, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you Chair White, Board of Directors. Tonight we have some routine employment for the summer. That's within our budget of filling positions, many of which were we going to be releasing from their other districts that they're currently under contract, but didn't want to wait until July so that they could actually effectively start some of the summer work. So you'll see that on that candidates for employment. And then we also have a certified position as well. Oops, sorry, one second here. Sorry. Lost it here, sorry about that. There we go. And then we also have a standard certified change as well for our ECFE, summer teacher, parent educator at Edgewood, and that is also one that is before you tonight for approval for some of our additional support in ECFE.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the candidates for employment as presented.
So made.
By Director Franz, second.
Second.
By Director Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Resignations, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you Chair White, Board of Directors. Tonight we have Executive Director Emily Herman, who is en route by the way, so sorry about the delay, but she has tendered her resignation and moving on, and her last date of employment with us will be June 30th of 2025.
I entertain a motion to accept the resignation as presented.
So made.
By Director Bullion, second. By Director Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That concludes the business portion of the meeting tonight. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the business portion of our meeting.
So made.
By Director Franz, second. By Director Atkinson, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. We have no speakers tonight for the public forum, and moving down to the purpose and agenda, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you Chair. Tonight we've got a few items. We have our end of the year superintendent evaluation review. We are going to give an update on some academic progress indicators and some updates on some grants, and then the rest will be going into some of the policy discussions. We have a 900 policy as well as some of the board's 200 series policies for your first reading this evening.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's yearly evaluation public statement. Last Monday night during a closed session, the Board of Education completed its review for the 2024-25 school year for Dr. Thomas, and I will read the summary as follows. Dear Dr. Thomas, on behalf of the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools Board of Education, I want to extend our sincere appreciation for your continued leadership throughout the 2024-25 school year. As part of our annual review process, this letter summarizes key findings from your summative evaluation grounded in board member feedback and our district's strategic alignment goals. It is intended to recognize your strengths, acknowledge areas for growth, and out for guidance for continued collaboration. One of the most consistently recognized strengths of your leadership is the culture of cooperation you are building across the district. Your deep well of patience, steady professionalism, and consistent respect you display for people is creating an environment rooted in trust. Board members noted how well you treat your team as professionals and work diligently to support a collaborative atmosphere that aligns with our shared mission. There has been meaningful progress in coordinating school improvement strategies and establishing a framework for academic consistency across buildings. The Board recognizes these efforts and encourages continued momentum in this area. We look forward to the implementation of comprehensive school improvement strategies such as district dashboards and goal-setting tools to help the Board and the broader community visualize our progress in connection to student outcomes. Your efforts to manage fiscal challenges while encouraging system-level financial thinking have been acknowledged. You've shown the ability to make difficult decisions, prioritize spending, and balance short and long-term needs. The performance measure in this evaluation focuses on your ability to understand, plan, and lead the budget process, an area in which your leadership has been intentional and informed. As the Board considers future levy, we encourage a thoughtful analysis of past campaigns. This reflection should help ensure that any future efforts more clearly reflect community priorities, build broader public support, and communicate a vision aligned with district goals. You continue to be highly visible at district and community events, and your approachable positive demeanor remains a consistent area of strength. The Board appreciates your responsiveness and the tone you set in your interactions with stakeholders. Looking ahead, there is opportunity to extend outreach by fostering new relationships, especially with partners who share our mission but may not yet feel fully connected to the district's direction. Additionally, your active advocacy and partnership with state and national organizations demonstrates a strong commitment to elevating the district's priorities at broader levels. This work helps reinforce public trust and advance the strategic interests of our schools. This review reflects the collective insight of the Board and our ongoing commitment to shared leadership. While together we have challenges to address, particularly around academic outcomes, financial constraints, and broader community engagement, there is also strong confidence in your ability to lead through them. We thank you for your commitment to our district and look forward to working together during the 2025-26 school year to build on this year's progress in support of students, staff, and the Prior Lake Savage community. Sincerely, Dan White, Chair of Board of Education. Dr. Thomas?
Thank you Chair White, thank you members of the Board for the opportunity to engage in another year together and at the end of the year with this annual review. As I shared during our time last week and during the closed session, one of the things that's very important to me is the power of evaluation, and I pride myself on being a very reflective leader, and it's not just to be affirmed and where things are going well, but also where we have opportunities to continue to grow, so it's the glow and grow. And that's something that is important to me because I want to make sure that I'm continuing to be my personal best, you know, for this district and this broader community, as well as, you know, serving the will of the Board as well. It's something I try to model for our staff throughout the district to ensure that they are also looking at that opportunity to seek feedback for continued improvement and growth, while at the same time pausing to give ourselves permission to celebrate as well because there are a lot of great things that continue to happen in our district. I will say that I think you foreshadowed a couple of things in that response, and thank you for those words. There are opportunities for us collectively as a Board, as an administration team, to ensure that we are getting the outcomes that we desire, whether it's academic outcomes, graduation outcomes, engagement outcomes, a variety of things. That is something that I think collectively we are equally committed to ensuring that that happens. You noted the notion of resources, and I think that's another thing that's a big conversation on our horizon, and how we will effectively discuss ways that we can address the resources so that we are able to have what is necessary to reach the outcomes that we desire. I also really appreciate the notion of having tighter alignment around the strategic priorities, and that's one of our first engagements as we actually have just been in the process of hiring that new individual, and that was actually centered on a lot of conversations and questions that we asked the prospective candidates as well. Because similar to what we've done with LTFM or five-year forecast for budget, we will be developing a five-year academic framework with goals and metrics and objectives, and we'll speak a little bit to some of that this evening that we've been working on together as examples, and then getting your perspectives on are these the right look-for's for the high-level, high-leverage pieces. And then lastly, let me read my writing, you mentioned establishing new partnerships with our community, particularly those that are with us but maybe not committed or not connected, I'm sorry, not connected to the current direction. And that's very significant because, you know, one of our core beliefs in our strategic plan is around being unified in our efforts. And I know that there is not a single district that will be all-to-all at all times, not that naive, but I do understand the importance of us being a more unified community, both within the district internally, as well as our external community as well. The world has enough happening, as we all know, that keeps us apart, and I think the more that we find of our common interests and shared commitments, the better off we are and the better off our students will be in for that as well. So I appreciate that push of that statement in there as well. So thank you again, and I look forward to a fantastic year with this Board.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Okay, moving on to the academic update. Dr. Thomas, want to kick it off?
Yes, thank you. So several months ago, in conversations with the Board, there was questions, particularly that were stemming around a lot of the math discussions, and so that's really what prompted a lot of interest in finding ways that we can better articulate some of those pathways, and we'll be planning for that. But we are also taking this opportunity to share, as I stated, some of the academic metrics that we would like to engage with you all on, on high-leverage monitoring metrics, similar to what we've talked about with our financial dashboard. What are some of those high-leverage metrics that we believe would be the ones that we want to be looking at systemically, but also then within, based upon that, within our schools? So we're going to talk about that first, then we're going to engage in some of the conversations around the math pathways, particularly at the secondary, which was kind of the impetus for some of this broader discussion, and then close out with giving some updates around some of the changes that are taking place specifically around the ANI funding and how some of that's being converted into more direct student support services to really bolster our efforts on trying to minimize those achievement gaps and accelerate some of that closure as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Zambusch to start us off in the conversation.
Good evening Chair White, members of the Board, Dr. Thomas. Here tonight, I am going to present some initial thinking and alignment around strategic metrics. This conversation is going to be a little bit tricky because the fine details of this have not been entirely worked out, and that's part of the discussion tonight. So I think to the extent possible, we want to stay at the level of really looking at the type of framework that we have laid out here and get some conversation around that without going down too many rabbit holes if possible. So this is not a fully, you know, sometimes we bring things forward and things are very, you know, formal and data is kind of set. This is very much a working draft of something that we're working on, so just wanted to give you that context from the beginning that this is still a work in progress, and nothing on here has been set in stone.
Dr. Zambusch, if I may also, and I'm sorry Board, I forgot to share that we will also be planning for our annual fall deeper dive with you on, on very in-depth metrics. Some of those metrics are embargoed, so we can't publicly discuss them, but certainly that will still be part of our annual discussion that we'll be having with the Board as we typically do.
So we're going to start by talking about some of the progress indicators we've been working on. Currently, what we've been working on in the data realm is two main types of data displays, and if you look on lots of different district websites, this is a very typical type of display that districts would have. One is kind of a by-the-numbers display. We do have a version of that on our website currently, but I'm currently working with a new vendor, Aubrey, to kind of revamp and rethink some of our by-the-numbers data displays just to show a little bit more description of who are the students that we serve and what does our district really look like. So there's been some mockups of this. Again, I just want to reiterate, these visuals are not in their final format. It's really just intended to show you the types of data displays that we're working on and where this thinking is going. So the by-the-numbers mock, I'll go through this fairly quickly. It really is a visual look at what our enrollment numbers look like and a snapshot in time. This would be something that would be updated daily or nightly. This is a snapshot that happened, I believe, last week. Also, we would look at enrollment by school, looking at key demographic variables. These are all publicly available data sources, so this isn't giving anything new that we wouldn't be able to find, but just kind of re-envisioning how to kind of, how a good snapshot view of the district overall. Then over time, these by-the-numbers displays would also incorporate school-level demographics and kind of a snapshot of what each school looks like, kind of like a school profile. And just really visualizing the students that we serve, the different programs they might be part of in terms of special education or a 504 status, English learners, that type of thing. So all of that is being kind of worked on now so that we can have that ready for that external display. The second thing that's in the works is what would be kind of a scorecard section. This is something that when you adopt a new strategic plan, you typically rework your indicators to align with that strategic plan, and this is the work that's being done to kind of identify what are those key indicators that are aligned to our strategic plan that can kind of roll up as to key metrics that we would want to report on on a regular basis. This is currently what the scorecard draft looks like. It's not in a program currently that would be externally facing, but it's a working document to really show what could this look like. These are the four pillars of our strategic plan. Academic excellence, optimized resources, positive learning environments, and community partnerships. And I will kind of go one by one and talk about some of the metrics that are being discussed within each of these categories. Academic excellence is obviously the big one and the one that we've talked about a lot, so I'll go in a little bit more detail on this one. So academic excellence, when we look at a scorecard level metric, these are really our highest-level metrics that are an annual measure of success or change over time, and these would generally be our MCA or our summative measures. And then we also would display career and college readiness indicators such as our ACT composite score, some of the outcomes that we see in terms of advanced placement courses, and students getting those three are hired on the AP exams that would give them college credit, and then some graduation rate data. Also, all of these metrics are designed with the school improvement plans in mind, so this is very in alignment with what the high school is currently tracking as their key metrics for career and college readiness, and as we go through the other ones, the schools in their process and departments in their improvement processes are talking about all of these metrics. So all of that is in alignment from a department and a school level. Of course, the MCAs are not the only thing we would track. I think like a school improvement plan, it gives a very high-level overview of the types of things that a school is working on. The MCAs are a very summative measure, we've talked about that, it's kind of the, at the end of the day, what did it look like? That doesn't give us those formative measures or how we're tracking progress. So what you see on a scorecard is not all of the information that we're tracking on a regular basis. So in the, I'm going to go, okay, that was just, there's no slide for that. So basically, there's a lot of other formative measures that we would be tracking on a regular basis, and that would be our FastBridge data. We can look at, you know, some specific, look at grades or other types of other metrics that are formative along the way. Also down the line, as I mentioned, we would be developing school-level metrics. I think I didn't take an actual clip of this because I think we need to talk as a community first about what it means to report out school-level metrics in this way, and, you know, especially at the elementary level, that comparison across schools and what that means, and, you know, just being careful that a scorecard metric doesn't mean that a school is good or bad by a single metric. So just really, that's, this is kind of like the next iteration is to start looking more at that school level, and within the school improvement plans at the site level, how do we think about looking at metrics at the site level as well? I'm also in the process of developing what's called a stoplight report, really that, and a lot of the documents that we work with, the data, it's important to know what the actual numbers are, but it also is important to know change over time. So how do things look from a visual standpoint, where are areas that things are improving, where are some areas where things are going down, where are things stagnant? So kind of, this is a mockup of an example, and this is not our data, but a mockup of the type of thing that we could look at in terms of not just the level of, you know, percentage of students who were at low risk on FastBridge, but what did that look like in terms of comparing to that same period last year? So are we moving in a positive direction, are we moving in a negative direction, and then really disentangling why that might be the case and figuring out that root cause there? So in terms of the formative measures, FastBridge data is something we look at a regular basis. We look at those risk levels, but we also look at specific subtests to see where are specific skill gaps and growth over the course of the year. That winter growth data is really important to kind of set the stage for what the spring learning looks like. Also tracking, you know, English learner exit rates, really digging into ACT data, what are the subject area tests look like? We have other data in terms of, Apple is our language acquisition data that we look at in terms of our immersion programming, and then in secondary, we look at grades, if students are failing courses, and then if that's associated with either high attendance or low attendance, that may mean a different type of intervention for students. And then the disaggregation of data is important to understand whether there is something systematic happening at a site level or a grade level or within demographic groups. Within our optimized resources section, between the school improvement plans and department plans, this one has landed fairly squarely in the human resources and the finance areas. The school improvement plans this year have really been to implement the new Danielson framework with fidelity, making sure teachers are getting high-quality feedback on their instruction. The rate this year was very, very high because of that, and, you know, continuing that metric for making sure that we're getting high-quality feedback to teachers. Some of these are also example metrics of, a three-year rolling average of retention is a research-based metric that indicates success in a district. So kind of a combination of what our departments are tracking and then what is the research say in terms of metrics that are predictive of outcomes that we're looking for. For finance, the per pupil spending and then percent for instruction, those are metrics that are on the state report cards, so things that we can pull in terms of comparisons to state and then look at other districts as well. For positive learning environments, this really has three major sections in it. One is key STUDER survey items. Recently, our schools have focused on bus safety and then students nice, being nice and showing respect to each other. We just had a end-of-year retreat with our learning leaders, and there was some potentially new areas that schools have identified that they'd like to focus on in terms of student engagement. So these may shift over time depending on what schools identify as kind of those key areas for student needs in terms of making sure that they have that positive learning environment. And then attendance and behavior are key metrics that we'll want to look at as well. Attendance really is a metric that we want to look at more at the upper level. When you look at attendance at the lower-level elementary, that is really more of an indicator of whether the family is able to get a student there versus an indicator of whether the student, over time, as a student becomes more independent and has more decision-making and is able to drive, that attendance is more of a metric of that student engagement, more so than something that maybe needs to be addressed at the family level. And then behavior, we want to track, it's complicated because behavior is a measure of both what the student does and how adults respond to that behavior. So it's something that we want to think through, how we can present some metrics that kind of give us a snapshot of what that looks like at our sites. Community partnerships, these are also really based on our community survey. The first one is the parent and caregiver survey that we disseminate. One of the metrics is to just increase participation over time to make sure that we get as many voices as possible responding to that survey, and then a goal in terms of increasing overall satisfaction with the district over time. And then in terms of the other section is key STUDER items, again driven by that root cause analysis that schools conduct, that needs assessment on what are those things that really need to be improved in order to improve those partnerships at the parent caregiver level. This past year and the year before, a lot of that has focused on positive messages home and feedback on students' learning. Schools are in development of their school improvement plans now, so we'll see kind of to what I sense some of these stay and others are shifted. The other thing we're in the process of developing is a long-term curricular adoption cycle calendar. The purpose of this is that we have a lot of complicated timelines when it comes to piloting curriculum, adopting them, knowing that it takes three full years to implement a curricular resource in order to see those measurable outcomes. And on top of that, we have constantly changing standards and constantly changing MCA tests depending on the subject area. So in a development of a comprehensive timeline that shows where we are in the curricular adoption cycle and when we can start to really anticipate those measurable outcomes. Just to look at one example, we know that we are, I should look here because that's, I can see better. We know that we are in the second, this is the second year of our Bridges implementation goal. All of the teacher goals this year were based on implementation of the Bridges resource. We know that next year we'll be shifting towards that outcome goal because that's year three. year three of our implementation of Bridges. The carrot in the school year 27-28 indicates that we'll be changing standards. So just trying to understand how things may change over time depending on state contextual factors and also where we are in our curricular adoption process. And then all of this kind of wraps up into, given our academic excellence priority and all of the metrics that we're looking at, where does this kind of land for us in terms of what our vision is for academic excellence moving forward?
Thank you, Dr. Zumbush. And I'll just share, these are four of our key, key draft goal areas that we want to focus on. First and foremost, in the upper left-hand quadrant, strengthening tier-one instruction. And this is where we want to have, you know, eighty-five percent or so of our students having quality experiences at that, in that space. When you think of a traditional MTSS model, you know, a good portion of your students need to ensure that we have that. So key to that is ensuring that we have that evidence-based curriculum across all content areas. And as Dr. Zumbush alluded to, sometimes that's a moving target because of some of the state standards change, et cetera. There are publishing companies that try to future-proof a lot of their content, but we know that we're always going to be at the whim of any of those changes that may take place and/or any state laws that change through legislative sessions. The other area that we are really wanting to focus in on, kind of as some strategies within that goal, is to ensure that we have more consistent instructional blocks. That's a key area that we've observed over this past year, particularly as we've been doing some of our informal rounds, is that school, school schedules, particularly, I'll just use at the elementary school, we have the vast array of differentiation of, of time. We want to make sure that, but the research notes in terms of blocks of time for math, for example, is actually being delivered. Because some schools have, as to how they're structuring their, their school day, we might find, you know, twenty minutes here, twenty minutes here, and twenty minutes here. So maybe they're getting the sixty minutes, but it's not coming in a block. And then we're looking at ways that we can increase instructional efficiency, but also what's best for students in terms of their learning. And I understand that we need to have release time, you know, learning breaks, et cetera. But that's one opportunity, I think, in terms of a strategic, or a strategy that we believe is going to be something that we're definitely going to want to hone in on, you know, across the board. And then if you take a look at that last bullet, just monitoring quality through coaching and classroom walkthroughs, one of the other aspects that we are looking to revise this, or for the upcoming school year, it's something that we've been doing with Studer, particularly from the leadership standpoint, but we'll be taking some of those same principles also in partnership with one of our local universities to develop instructional rounds. So it's very similar to what you might see in a hospital at shift changes, where we are looking at, you know, how our students are doing, or in a medical setting, you're looking at how your patients are doing, so that you're handing that off to the next groups of individuals who can be there for the next rounds of support. And that's something that we are going to be tightening up on the district services side of, of support to ensure that we are tighter on our instructional rounds, to do more progress monitoring from the central support standpoint, in addition to what's happening already within each individual school and within each, you know, department and grade level. We just need a greater presence in that to ensure that we have that alignment. We talk about data being developmental, not judgmental. So whether that's evaluation data or student performance data or whatever that might be, we want to make sure that data is being used to inform practice. And through structures such as professional learning communities or some of those release days that we've had in the past, we want to make sure the appropriate data is being harnessed so that teachers have what they need, when they need it, to make the best adjustments to their instruction. Part of our partnership with ABRE, who is an IT solutions company who helps do some of this visualization and put it at the fingertips of administrators and staff, is that it's more accessible. So we know that the easier we can have staff access the information that's necessary to shift instructional practice, the more inclined that they will be leaning into leading more effectively with data. And then to Dr. Zumbush's point earlier this evening, as we set those larger academic strategic goals, then we're back mapping that into each individual school, grade level or department to say, now, what does this mean for fourth grade, for third grade, or for the science department, et cetera? So that we have a better structure of, of data usage and data literacy all throughout the district that couples with those instructional walkthroughs that I just mentioned in the strengthening tier-one core and structure, instruction. Moving over to the upper right quadrant, the big goal is to ensure that our teachers are at their best capacity to ensure they're delivering the best instruction in our classrooms. We have an opportunity to revision how we've been leveraging professional development in our district. We also know that we have a lot of changes, particularly around literacy, that's going to be mandated, so very tight on some of the things. And so we're gonna really have to harness that differently moving forward, particularly around the science of reading, and the, and that's going now into the secondary for next year. So that's going to be a, a new plan that's going to be realigned there to ensure that we're delivering on the expectations of that new state statute. One of the things that we're really proud of, and we've given our annual Q-Cop report to you all, and this year, we really wanted to make sure that our, we had a high completion rate. Because what we know with the research is that the best feedback from an evaluation is that post-conferencing feedback. And if we're not getting those evaluations completed, that post-conferencing is not happening with our staff. So similar to the debrief that you all had with me, that's where the learning comes, and that's where the goals and ideations of strategies come from that, that process. This year, I'm proud to say, and Emily, Director Herman, you can correct me, was it about ninety-eight percent?
Superintendent Thomas, members of the board, we're now up to ninety-nine point four eight percent.
Ninety-nine, so it's gone up a bit. So, you know, and, and this is not just a technical, check the box, that I've done in evaluation. This is actually deep feedback that we can provide our staff to ensure that they are mirroring research as well as observing through data and then that daily pedagogy in the classroom that they can triangulate the best practices for our kids. And then this gives us an opportunity to really revision how professional learning communities or PLCs are being realized throughout our, our district, I think, kind of coupled back with some of that common and consistent instructional blocks. That allows us to give better structure and support around professional learning communities to, versus everybody kind of being all over the board with regards to calendars and where we can plug in for central support. We lose efficiency when we don't, excuse me, when we don't have that. And then lastly, we have, as I stated earlier, about, you know, eighty, eighty percent or so of kids being in tier-one instruction, and that's where everyone should experience that core learning. But then we also know that we have a percentage of our students who are going to need tier-two and upwards of tier-three going into special ed support as well to kind of round out that final fifteen percent. And one of the things that we are committed to doing next year is really investing in how we can build up with our limited resources, but we need to find a way to build up a more robust, multi-tiered system of support. So when a student is not performing well at tier-one, through some of this technology of, of data literacy that we're partnering with, we can build in automatic flags as well. So we can have tech kind of monitoring for when students, in addition to what teachers are seeing daily as well. I don't want to say we're taking that out, but we can auto, have automatic alerts come up. We can, when we run reports, we can run reports categorized by how many students are receiving tier-two, what was the exit and return back to tier-one, and/or are we seeing increases in the amount of referrals for tier-two? And that's something that we want to make sure that we have a more robust approach and intentionality around. Because in the absence of that, right now, our only other tier, quite frankly, is special education support. And that's a very costly, both from a time and financial resource methodology to have that be your next tier automatically. Not to say that some students don't require that, but what we would like to see is a better intervention process to prevent students from going into special ed unnecessarily because that's the only other place that we have some of those alternative supports. And we do, and they do well, but it's a, just a very costly way of doing it. So we'd like to shift some of that and really round out more of that tier-two aspect. So just want to share with the board, these are preliminary academic excellence goals that align to the strat plan. You'll see some semblance of some of the strategy thinking that we will be spending this summer, based upon, once we get all the updated and cleaned data that's disembargued as well, to start then setting some actual measurements around some of this as to what we can expect, that would then then roll up to that larger dashboard that we initially shared. So with that initial framing of that, I'll just pause here while we open it up for some discussion as to our, is, are there pieces that we're, are, are missing, some things that you would like us to consider, and just open that up, share. And then our team stands ready to engage as well.
Questions, comments? Charles?
Yes. Dr. Zumbush, could you tell me what would go into the school-level metrics if we moved forward on that?
Thank you for the question, Director Johnson. I think the answer is a little bit two parts. One is that, as I mentioned, with the school improvement plans, every site needs to go through a comprehensive needs assessment that really unpacks what went well and, you know, areas for improvement within a site, and that helps build their school improvement plan. So part of the metrics are attached to that school improvement plan. The other answer to that is that as we solidify the district-level metrics, that is something that then can cascade down at the site level without having those completely solidified. I think the, the sketch or the outline of what that, those school metrics looks like isn't as clear, but I think a lot of the same metric, it will be a lot of the same metrics. So looking at MCA outcomes, obviously, high school, elementary have some inherently different outcome metrics, but also just a snapshot of what that building looks like in terms of the students that it serves, and then any sort of specialty programming, or like if a program like Laola would have, you know, choose to have a metric in terms of language acquisition. So there could be some specific metrics, but overall, it would look very aligned to that district report card for those high-level metrics.
And I would just add to, so the scaled-down version of what our district metrics would be, would be consistent, so we would own that real estate at the school level. But definitely want to work with our principals to give them that autonomy on some other local measures that they also feel are important to their community. That we might not track specifically, but it's high leverage for them. So there'd be that both-and approach.
Absolutely. One other question.
Sorry.
And you plan on having all this up and running by start of school?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Our plan is to have this ready to roll out for this fall.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, sure. So I have a question. So understand there's a difference between matrices, matrices from grade school, but I think the high school, a lot of people look at high schools. So having that dial down on, on, specific to the high school, I think is really important.
Absolutely.
Because, like I said, high schools. And then also, a lot of this data is online through MDE by school. So I also think that, I understand the concern of having it broken out for each elementary school, but at the end of the day, the data is available if people really want to dive into, you know.
Absolutely, yeah. I, I don't disagree, Director Atkinson, and, or I should say, we don't disagree. So a lot of this, all, as you say, is very public on MDE's, North, Northern Star, or NorthStar Online, or Northern Star website. And one of the things we want to be mindful of is, again, it's this whole notion of the developmental aspect of how this is being used. A lot of this data is also in our school improvement plans. And so when our schools are doing their states of the schools in the fall, they're sharing this data publicly as well. We just want to be able to have a more visual way of dashboarding, very similar to what we've done with our finance dashboard, to bring that same level of awareness and understanding and kind of make it meaningful for our community to understand this amorphous number that gets published in the newspaper or wherever they might find, or the test that their student brings home. Well, now they have some context around what that actually means and can have some better dialogue on understanding the holistic aspect of how a school is doing, as well as some deeper conversations or questions to ask when they go in for conferences, et cetera. So, and then the, I just want to be clear, this isn't just for elementary. So if, if you all thought high school and middle school were exempt, they're not. That, that is part of it, too. They're just different sets of metrics that we would be tracking that compared to elementary. But they're, they've always been part of that vision to have this as well.
And I think, I mean, I think, once you take a deeper dive into the elementary schools, there's some really great things to celebrate in our district. So I think it would actually be really great to have that online.
Absolutely.
I have a question about the slide for positive learning environments. I understand the data points here look like they're all student-driven. We talk about staff here, where staff are valued. Would it be worth exploring adding some sort of information about evaluating our staff?
Yes.
And I'm not sure what that looks like, but I'm just, we do talk about staff there, which is really important for positive learning environments.
Yeah. And, and, and if you take, if you take, sorry, let me just zoom in on this. So one of the things that around positive learning environment, this is something that we take from our key stakeholder Studer information. So we would have some of that information that would be metrics that we want to track for that year. So we might see a pattern established around a particular question set that netted a result that we want to say, okay, that's going to be one of our, our drivers that we want to track and monitor. So absolutely, whether it's our students, our staff, or our parents, as our three primary stakeholders, that's where a lot of this information could be pulled in on that first area, in addition to some of the school-based related stuff around behavior and attendance.
And then I just have two other quick questions on the very last slide for vision for academic excellence priority. For the first strengthened tier-one instruction, under the bullet point, monitor quality through coaching and classroom walkthroughs, how is that executed, or how do you see that coming together?
Yeah. So what we envisioned for that.
Who specifically?
Yeah, what we envisioned for that, Director Atkinson, would be members of our central academic team partnering with members from our school base, building instructional leadership teams. So having quarterly touchpoints throughout the year where we understand at the very beginning, every school and department does their school improvement or their department improvement plan with their goals and metrics for the year. And we now will establish at the central support, an instructional rounds protocol that myself, Dr. Warner, Dr. Zumbush, or others would go out and work with that building principal and members from their ILT to say, okay, what are the look-for's for us, you know, when we're going to spend a couple hours in your building today? And that would be something that we go through, and then we would give that feedback, that observation feedback live right there in the moment to say, okay, this is what you wanted us to observe, this is what we actually saw, here are the points of alignment and to celebrations, as we've talked about. And here's some opportunities for us to ask some questions of, is it just the time of day that we saw something? Kind of like going into a classroom for a regular teacher observation, you're going to see a snapshot of time. So it's our ability to have a deeper understanding and context on saying, okay, the, this is a sample of what we saw today, and here's how we see it, you know, rolling up to your school improvement plan. And then if there's anything you need from us to do something differently, okay, then that's the ask for them to say, well, we need XYZ resource, or this would be an opportunity for us to strengthen professional development on our next release day. If we see that pattern, for example, across a grade level, so, or a grade band. So that's the protocol. We would be using something that one of our local universities has partnered with, you know, across the country, with some very similar work that Studer also has engaged in, but it would be our academic central division, representation, partnering with building leadership and teacher leadership to observe for those look-for's tied, tied to their skips. So that would be our formal touchpoints. And then, of course, there's still going to be those informal pop-throughs, whether it's the principal doing that, myself, other members from the academic team, namely, like Dr. Warner, Dr. Edwards, or, you know, you know, who's in that role, and myself, that would also have those informal touchpoints, too. That wouldn't necessarily be scored and unpacked, you know, but it would be more that one-to-one coaching with that building principal.
Thank you. My last question is, under the MTSS supports, do, how do advanced students fit into that?
It would be all of that. So if we have students who need acceleration or students who need some remediation, that's kind of what this whole notion of MTSS is about. And so when we're looking at ways that we can differentiate, you know, our instruction, that's where we need to start finding ways. So we'll talk a little bit about that in our next portion of the presentation, particularly on the middle school math. But it's that same concept of, when we have a student who's going forward in their educational career, there's going to be opportunities for going forward in their educational career, there's going to be opportunities for them to take different ramps for their learning. Sometimes they might take a ramp that slows things down. Sometimes they might take a ramp that accelerates that. But our ability to to have that tiered system of support to meet those individual needs, again, going back to our core definition of equity to give students and staff what they uniquely need to be successful, that's where we center a lot of that work.
Amy?
I just want to say, this all is really exciting to be able to look forward to. I, I mean, having it aligned to the strategic plan, I think there's a lot of great things in here. One of the thoughts that I had as we're going through all these things, and I know that they're not solidified as of yet, so, but just, I just kind of wanted to share this thought, is that there's a lot of information, a lot of data that we're looking to collect and to be able to share on the on a future dashboard, which I think is really great. But my, where my thoughts went is this administrative tool, how are we ensuring that it is, the support is going to the students and the teachers and that it doesn't feel like another thing that teachers have to report? Or does that make sense?
It does.
There's a lot of things in here, and I, I think that teachers often talk about their loads, their reporting loads and all of those things, and I'm, I'm just mindful, like, how, how are we ensuring?
I, I hear you, and and I'm mindful of that as well. And a couple of you who were on the board when I first started here know that that was one of the first changes that I instituted when I came here because, again, this is not to say what was happening in and of itself was bad, but there were a lot of metric tracking that became very technical. And the feedback to me was, we have all these joint work groups or whatever they might have been called, and they're all responsible for these kind of sub-bullets of things to generate reports and numbers and data. And it was numbers everywhere. And so we're not recreating that. What you're seeing here is a lot of data, and I think twofold. One, we want to make sure this dashboard really helps our community first and foremost understand, one, how we're performing and what all this means, whether it's a running glossary definitions of what, I'm sorry, what the certain assessment might be used for, et cetera, so that families understand, what does all this data mean? So that they understand how to be more of a support. So that's, that's one aspect. What you're seeing here, and I know for you all, what we're trying to do for you is give you that thermometer approach of what are the things that you should be taking a temperature on that you should be monitoring and seeing? Because there's a lot of data here that we'll never see the light of the board necessarily, okay? Because it's, it's our formative utilization of coaching development, et cetera. Not to say that some of you don't have an interest, and we can talk one-to-one about that, but it's not going to be those high leverage pieces because we want to make sure that you're given, given the data necessarily from your level of governance to make the best decisions for when we, you know, for example, when we're looking at read act and the potential new curriculum that will be coming as a, as a means to bolster the literacy. Well, you want to see some of those high level metrics. You don't need to be all into the weeds of some of the semantics of curriculum, but what does the data suggest that when we look at the market for a resource, a curricular resource, these are the three things, Michael, that we should be looking for based upon what we are seeing in the data. And as long as that curricular resource meets these three, then this other aspects, the pedagogy, the science and the research, we leave that to you all to best vet that. As long as it meets these outcomes that we need to hit, that's, you know, part of that resource. So that's how this would be iterative for all of you. And then in terms of teacher, this isn't something that teachers are going to necessarily be gathering. This is data that we have access to, and this would be data that would also be pushed from our own, you know, warehouse system into a better visualization that teachers would have an internal facing dashboard that would look slightly different than the public, but it allows them to then categorize their kids, see who's there. We can, you know, as a teacher, I could break out, you know, various ways to see how I might do my instructional groups a little bit differently based upon content, and it makes it very user-friendly and more intuitive. And again, with some of the AI built into technology, you know, data systems nowadays, we can build an automatic cut flags to say, once a student reaches this, then I want to flag for a discussion that I have, you know, with Dan to say, looks like you've done really well, well on these formative assessments, I really want to start pushing you a little bit and accelerating some things. So I'm going to give you something different, right? Or I might have a cut score to say, you know, Mary, you might need to slow it down a little bit because you're not demonstrating success around the standard. And I just, I don't have to be looking for that, it'll just tell me. Have a conversation with Mary, have a conversation with Dan. So we can have some of that intuitive support that's built into some of the dashboards with Abre. So I hope that gets to your question, that we're not recreating a whole bunch to add to a plate, we're actually trying to streamline and organize the plate differently for, for our teachers.
I can see how this also could do just that. And, and my sharing that thought, it, it just mainly being mindful that the support we want at the students and staff, I really appreciate how it ties everything to the strategic plan. I feel like the, since adopting the strategic plan, the work being done to have that from boardroom to classroom is, is very encouraging.
Jessica?
Yeah, one other thought, on the community partnerships. You know, I, I think the way, like, I read the strategic plan, too, is just even outside of like the, the parent caregiver. So is there a metric or something we could consider that may benefit us to gather from community outside of this, the parent caregiver? So other stakeholders, city partners, you know, I, I don't know, I'm just tossing out ideas, but, you know, getting that feedback incorporated also, like, are we, are we a good partner with, you know, whether different organizations and with the cities and with, you know, whatever that might be?
So similar to what I submitted during my evaluation in those artifact folders that you all had access to, you'll see that partnership profile that we've done for all of our schools across the entire system. So something like that would be a good data point that we could leverage to say, are we growing or expanding partnerships?
Right.
And or if we want to say, you know, we want to get real specific about the type of partnership we want to expand in. So I'll just arbitrarily say, if we want to bolster our medical connections to really help our medical career pathway at MinCaps, then we want to say, we want to increase that by 3%. And so let's find, you know, five more agencies that might be able to give some of those in, you know, the field resources and supports and experiences for our kids around medical, just arbitrarily. And then I would say, lastly, Director Mason, I think within our community education, that's another place where our broader community meets the district, if you will. And so we could also set some metrics around that in terms of class participation rates, the drive or the demand for new courses. So there's some metrics that we could partner with Director Dahl and his team to better understand. And in this, part of this discussion tonight, which is just solicit from all of you, what are some things that are top of mind around some metrics that you think might be worth exploring? And wanted you to help derive and design that process before coming down with some finals that we would bring to you, you know, first part, part of the school year next year as we get ready to launch.
And I'll just add, we do have a number of community education metrics, and early childhood is another area that is relevant for community partnerships. In our coaching with Studer, I think their thought was that is maybe a little bit more of that formative or, you know, behind the scenes or departmental work. But I think anything's on the board for elevate, no pun intended, elevating any conversation that is a important metric for the community. So I know Director Dahl has goals around increasing the number of classes that are taught by community members and increased participation in community education. So we do have a number of those metrics getting tracked at the department level. But I, I also agree that, you know, a broader community metric would be helpful. And so any thoughts on what that could look like would be appreciated.
Yeah, I mean, my initial thought went to just like even communication, like, how are we communicating out to our, you know, not our parents in here, anyone that's not in the district, but also like, you know, volunteer opportunities or anything around that. But I don't know how you could gather that, I guess, is the challenge.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you very much for this. You know, as I look at all of this, it's, it's, it's stuff that I've seen under the MTSS umbrella for a while. It's more or less memorialized in the rubric and in the, in the matrices, so I appreciate it kind of coming to life. One of the things that is, is, is a little bit more difficult to measure, and I know that we've had conversations about this in the previous years, is, A, the cohort as it goes through the years, and trying to get it, not it, because nothing can be really measured at a point in time. By the time you realize there's an issue, you're putting in the changes, but the student is moving between grades. The group of students are moving between grades, and every so often, and I've seen this happen kind of in waves, where you have a wave of, let's say, a grade level sometimes go up or down, and it can skew if you're looking at it aggregately, let's say by building or something like that. So that's my first question, and I do think that's a, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, you do the work. That's a little bit easier to do K through eight. Once you get in high school, the MCA scores are not as reliable. They're not as reliable anywhere, the equivalent of that, simply because students aren't as engaged, especially the juniors. I mean, a lot of them don't even show up, et cetera. So measuring that as they continue through high school has always been a continued challenge. So if you could dress the K through eight in that cohort impact, and then, and I'm not saying that you're supposed to pull a rabbit out of a hat for high school, but any ideas that have been discussed about following this through in the nine through 12 grades?
Yeah, I don't have a clear answer because it is tricky, and I think one of the other things that's happened is the pandemic has, there's been certain cohorts that have been affected very specifically by whatever grade level they more or less missed during the pandemic. And so one cohort may have more social gaps, another cohort may have more math gaps, others may have more of the foundational reading gap. I think the nature of education is there's so many factors that go in, it's really hard to pinpoint that, but I, I hear your point. The other complexity is that it's really tempting to compare MCAs year over year, like what percentage of students met standards in third grade versus fourth grade? Did it go up or down? That is not recommended by our state, you know, measurement officials. It is really a test of very different set of standards. It's a test of the grade level standards, and while there's clearly a relationship, if you're, if you're doing really well in third grade standards, you're more likely to do well in fourth grade standards, but that is not necessarily that one-to-one correlation. But I can think a little bit more and talk to some colleagues and see how to better understand that cohort effect. And I do think that does help, and I know a lot of the board conversations have been related to that idea that, you know, if a particular outcome looks a certain way, does that kind of match what we've seen, been seeing from that cohort over time? Or is that something that maybe is something that was unexpected? So I think that is a definitely worthwhile conversation. I'll see what I can do in terms of.
And I might just add a little bit of additional context around, for example, specifically earlier in this slide, looking at the high school data set that we would intend to include here. And if you recall, earlier this year, we brought some conversation to the board, my recollection is might have been around October or November study session, where we were talking about focus on increasing student participation in our AP course offerings and likewise, the assessments at the high school level to address that concern that you, you brought up with juniors not being highly motivated by necessarily all the assessments that we put in front of them, juniors and seniors or and sophomores as well, actually some freshmen, too, that have exposure to AP course offerings, take that very seriously, and that's a great measure. So that is one of the reasons why, because we've been engaged as well with the high school administrative team also around the ACT test and that, that in addition to the composite score, there's a lot of good data around the other components of the ACT as a measure of where our progress is and adjustments that can be made. So I know that Dr. Zombush has been engaged in conversation with the team around that, too.
Yeah, I think we can dive deeper over time on student grades as well. One of the biggest predictors for on-time graduation is whether you fail a core course. That basically takes you off track. The biggest predictor for post-secondary GPA is your high school GPA. It's, it's a little bit of a complicated metric because it is both a content measure and an engagement measure. And then there's the added that each teacher has maybe some different metrics on how they grade, but in general, core courses, even just courses overall in the grade. So we, I think that's a metric that we can explore in terms of secondary because that really is predictive of how students do in post-secondary environments. In terms of the acquisition, I agree, and MCAs are only one grade level in reading and one grade level in math, so we don't even have a comprehensive data set. I think what we implemented this year, FastBridge across all ninth grade in all three quarters, I think that's an important metric to understand whether there's foundational gaps in, in terms of student skill set in the high school. So I think looking at FastBridge over time, and we're still not clear from the state what the guidance is in terms of secondary screening, but we might end up expanding that out if that's something that is really giving us better insight into, in terms of the reading abilities. But I think there's a lot more we could explore with that and that we, and I agree, we already, this isn't, teachers are not going to be collecting any additional information, this is all information that, I look at it on a regular basis, I think it is a matter of better organizing it and communicating it and being clear about what metrics tell us and what they don't.
I had one more. So to kind of piggyback exactly what you just said on what Director Bullion said, I remember, and I am very appreciative of what Dr. Thomas did because we tend to, we had so many committees and so many initiatives going on at one time. The biggest complaint we were hearing from staff was that they were losing their time to do that cross-functional evaluation, particularly in secondary, where they may have only seen a student once a day or three times a week for 45 minutes or an hour. They wanted that time to be, you know, their time to be maximized in front of students and with students. And so, you know, as we're gathering this data, I would hope that the data is gathered again in their normal course of their teaching and not another step forward, because that's going to take away from their time. And now that we're even more resource constrained, that is a concern.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to.
Sure, thank you. So several months ago, we were having discussions around math, and so I'm going to have the team come back forward and walk us through the conversation with some additional context and I think some visualizations to better understand some of the pathways and opportunities for kids to accelerate math as well based upon how they're performing. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Warner to start that conversation.
Good evening. First off, we'll just remind ourselves of where we started with our math vision. And so this was a really awesome opportunity for our K-12 math educators to come and really think about what is the learning experience for students look like, feel like, sound like in our math classrooms? And so we had our K-12 math educators start with this. You can see those bulleted points were really about that student learning experience, and that vision really guided and supported the next steps that we went through as committees to be able to adopt our resources so that we can bring that vision to life, so students really have that learning experience and then can apply that to their academic learning. So students really have that learning experience and then can apply that to their academic learning. Also then, just reminding where we were at with our secondary math timeline. We did put in there the piece about in 2023 and 2024, our Bridges math, because that really started that piece. We talked about our vision, we looked at where elementary was at. So that was that first year of that Bridges math implementation. And then piloting our CPM in our middle schools and are looking to align that with our Bridges and being able to see how that really folds into those next learning experiences for students. Again, to bring the math vision to life, to bring that academic excellence to life also. And then May, we took action, um, you took action as the board to adopt our CPM and purchase of that CPM. Next year, 2024, so what we just finished, um, first full year of implementation of our CPM at our middle schools and then exploration of that SAVIS resource in some specific courses at the high school. And then the next steps in that, looking for next year, our second full year of that implementation at our middle school. And then SAVIS implementation for our eighth grade advanced offering of Eldra One, making sure that we have that alignment with high school. So this really visualizes that intentionality around how all of those conversations led to the next transitions as students moved from different levels because wanting to make sure that that K-12 math learning experience was really connected and then also really vital for them to be um the important learners that they are. And then just reminding you of this, I know this was shared um at the board also a little while ago, but just looking at that academic excellence and math rigor and the visual, being able to remind ourselves how that was really grounded together. How we get to that academic excellence is through that mathematical rigor. And that conversation continues, it was stemmed again from the math vision, but also then built upon during professional development, opportunities during implementation to be able to say, what is that learning experience that we're truly making sure that students have? So that that math rigor is there. And then again, continuing to get to that when students need more of that or maybe need some of that scaffolding to be able to support so that we're at that math rigor which matches where our state standards are at so that all students are learning to their best level. And I think I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Zambush.
Yeah, so for these um slides, we want to revisit a little bit um what it means to um meet or exceed standards in terms of an MCA. Each of the grade levels have a lot of standards and they're categorized by strand. And each of the strand by grade level has um really detailed achievement level descriptors of what it looks like for a student to be in each of the categories of an MCA. This, some of these are not tested directly on the MCA, but regardless of the um whether they end up on an MCA or not, and there's actually achievement level descriptors for non-tested grades as well for the youngest students, what does it look like for a student to be um in a does-not-meet, partially-meets, meets-and-exceeds level in terms of their understanding of standards? And so just a reminder that um this is a progression from left to right. Everything um in the meets category is that student understands everything um from the far left side up to where they're at in terms of that depth of understanding. That mathematical rigor tool that Dr. Warner discussed, that directly maps onto those achievement level descriptors and um what we see on an MCA. So this table um kind of crosswalks those three legs of the, of the rigor stool to the different MCA levels. That horizontal line, the dark gray across the middle, that is what we consider that cut point for proficiency. In some senses, it's an arbitrary cut point, you can cut it at any point. It is a continuous data set, so students land all across the whole continuum of a um measured, you know, variability of their, the extent to which they understand standards. That one line is just kind of that cut point for what we classify as proficiency. But here you can see that um if a student has that um procedural fluency, that is necessary for a student to be at any level on an MCA. So that means they can calculate, um, they can understand um how um, you know, numbers work in terms of um computation and things like that. The, the key here is that the difference between a student that is not meeting standards and a student who is meeting or exceeding standards is that they not only have the procedural fluency, but they also have that deep conceptual understanding and application. This is not something that we have decided as a district is important. This is the state and, and national guidelines on what rigor looks like in mathematics. The National NCTM, um, the state, this is um how we have defined mathematical rigor. Another point is that this is the 2007 standards. We're in the process of updating those standards. And the direction that it's going is even more so in the sense that students really need to understand um not only how to calculate something, but how to understand the concept behind that and how to apply it to different scenarios. So in terms of the, the direction that we're going, it's going to be more so, we're going to see that, um, that um focus on the conceptual understanding and the application. So that is students taking a concept that they've learned and applying it into a situation that is new for them. And so that really demonstrates that depth of understanding of, of concepts. So this is um again, just a description of um the importance of all three components of rigor in terms of um getting to where we need to go in terms of our outcomes. And then um, I know this was a follow-up from um a March meeting. Looking at Dan because he always knows. We, uh, there was a question as we were reviewing um CPM data in terms of um whether students are, like how students are responding to um the, the curriculum so far. We did get a very high response rate from students in terms of their um CPM class. And I know the question here was, what happens if students are bored in CPM? In terms of the responses from students, um, of all the middle school students in CPM courses, there are 2.4% of students reported um being bored in class. I have both an incoming and outgoing middle schooler. And I can say that that's um a very common response from a middle school age student. So um I think this gives us some indication of kind of where students are at. I think if anything, um, we have a lot more students that are reported um being engaged or challenged and actually um kind of going through a process of uh that increasing rigor and having to explain things in a depth that they have not had to do that previously. So more so when we're looking at our student data, um, we're looking at um kind of some of the challenges of that increased rigor, um, more so than the other end of the spectrum. This isn't to say that there are certain students that um don't need other options. And so if a student really is not being challenged um in a math course, we do have a lot of different options and Dr. Edwards will go through that progression.
And before I dive into that, I want to back up just a moment in conversation to the previous slide and talk just a little bit about, uh, as we have wrapped up now year one of implementation, all of our math teachers came together last, all of our middle school math teachers came together in a meeting last week, uh, wanting to uh reflect on year one and had uh lengthy conversations about their learnings as a team of teachers. And uh they made some great uh recommendations of how to move that work forward into year two. And as we've uh shared at the, this table on numerous occasions, talking about the implementation science, Dr. Zambush has talked about that at length uh in past conversations. We're entering year two, uh, and uh we definitely want to address uh in the previous slide that number of students who are experiencing those struggles or are finding um that the, it's extremely challenging. The level of rigor that is apparent in that course uh and in the resource that we're using, how to help students better access that. So teachers had a, an opportunity to come together as a, as a six-eight group of uh teachers uh to discuss that. And then they, that was the morning uh session last week. Then they uh broke apart into grade levels to talk about uh what, what adjustments they are going to uh desire to make in year two and make plans for continued uh conversation in August and, and into workshop week and the launch of the upcoming school year. So just wanted to make mention of that uh here that we, our, our staff continue to learn through the implementation process, uh, how to better meet the needs of our students. But now diving into um the secondary math course progression, a topic that we've discussed here at the table uh on a number of occasions as well. And uh when we were looking at our tools and resources, looking at our uh vision that uh Dr. Warner talked about earlier here this evening, as well as looked at the progression of students coming from uh the Bridges implementation at the elementary level, leading into the middle school and preparing students for high school uh after they uh leave the middle school. We put together uh this progression that you see here, and it was the uh teachers who uh recommended that uh we take this model in the sixth and seventh grade, where all students are engaged in the math, sixth grade math, seventh grade math. And the choice begins in eighth grade for the pathway that they uh would journey on. But what, a couple of things I want to point out here. First of all, at all times, and we actually began this last year and continued it uh last, at the end of last, the 23-24 school year, continued it this year, to look at the current fifth grade students and uh before they come into middle school to assess uh where their performance is and consider uh those that would meet criteria for grade acceleration. And uh went through that in a uniform uh process in each of the last two springs. Jen Maloney, our differentiation specialist, uh, this goes back to an earlier question that Director Atkinson asked in the previous uh part of this presentation this evening around identifying uh the differentiation needs of all of our students. So looked at those students who would uh be based upon their performance to date up through into fifth grade, be looking to be uh needing more challenged, possibly to uh bypass their grade level peers. And identified some students uh and took them through a consistent process to have students continue to be uh grade accelerated. We also on occasion have double grade accelerated students um that would uh bypass, not only in the case of a fifth grader, bypass uh sixth grade and go on to seventh grade or bypass sixth and seventh and go on to eighth grade. We have a few of those students as well, um, and continue to support that. Uh, we also do have our teachers taking a look throughout as they look at all assessment data, back to that MTSS matrix that we spoke about in a few slides ago. Teachers looking at student performance throughout a school year. So just because a student starts out a year um in a particular course, specifically in sixth and seventh grade, but also in eighth uh grade as well, looking at their performance to see if that is uh showing that they are not being challenged or showing that they are showing evidence of being ready for additional uh material and challenge to take their uh application of knowledge and conceptual understanding to a higher level. But then again, at eighth grade, uh, that choice is uh given with the advisement of staff, certainly, when, when asked for. As students are registering for eighth grade, um, and likewise as they're registering for ninth grade. And as you can see in this particular document, once again, uh, the intent here is to highlight and showcase the levels of on and off ramps that students uh and, and, and families have as they consider uh their choice opportunities uh in the upper middle school and, and going into high school. And want to make sure that um in this document, it's clear that students again have the multiple on-ramps and off-ramps they can take as particularly as they get into the 11th and 12th grade. There are uh multiple courses that students can choose to engage in, and we're all in in math. They aren't limited uh to take one math course because the students have a little bit of greater flexibility in the number of courses that they, the types of courses that they can take later in their uh school years, uh, both in their junior and senior year. Typically, uh, students, I don't think it would be very typical for a ninth or 10th grader to take just because of the other requirements that they have uh for credits. But there are greater options for students as they, as they progress through our secondary courses. So just wanted to um provide that additional information and uh prepare to uh uh field questions. Dr. Thomas, would you like to, similar to what we did with the first section, now we're moving, uh, the next section is our A and I.
Conversation here. Questions?
Questions?
Uh, yes, I have a question. Thank you, Dr. Edwards. Question that I had with this, um, is there ever looking at, you know, this big map, particularly when students get to, you know, 10th, 11th, 12th grade? Are there any options here, like a child, for instance, I'm making it up, gets to um Algebra II honors in 10th grade and then has the opportunity to go to pre-calc or AP pre-calc? Is there any world where um similar to like our electives, where you need to have, you know, a certain number of kids be interested in that class for it to happen? Are there any situations here where even in 12th grade, looking at there, there's six options, that there wouldn't be that option for that child? Or are these like, yes, we will have these? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yep, yeah, I, yes, I, uh, I, I think I do. And I'll, I'll take a crack at it. And please, if I haven't answered the question, um, I'll clarify and we'll, we'll reach it. But uh all of the courses that you see listed on the 11th grade line and the 12th grade line, due to the size of our system and the number of students, those are all courses. Now, there might be an exception um where BC Calc, the far right corner, AP Calc BC, might not be offered in a particular year. But I do know that there have been numerous occasions where our teachers are willing actually to um combine uh courses. And that uh strategy happens often in the computer science electives that are noted in the bottom row there, where uh the teacher of those courses might have students because they're, they, they, those courses are sometimes, as they get further along and advanced, they, they are self-paced. And so teachers can facilitate uh students being at different levels in those courses. But the, uh, below that, all of the 11th and 12th grade electives, I'm quite confident, given our size, that those opportunities are there.
Thank you.
Jessica?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have a few questions and comments. I think on, on the secondary courses, you know, the biggest concern that I've heard is just around the middle school offering and our students essentially being um a year behind a lot of neighboring districts as far as, you know, not offering an advanced path. I know you say grade acceleration, but that's very different than a higher standard, I would say, than, than accelerated courses. You know, when I just like spot checked several of districts around here, a common acceleration path is to be doing like a pre-algebra in sixth, algebra in seventh, and then geometry in eighth. You know, and I feel like we are a year behind most districts. I don't know, how are we addressing that? And are we setting our students up for success with, you know, impacting college entrance and, and leveling and things like that and being competitive um without having that advanced pa- pathway? I mean, I know we have a different curriculum for kids that have extra needs, but then, you know, how are we addressing that for advanced math? And again, I think acceleration of grades is different. And even as a parent, I, I think I would, you know, never want my student to be a year ahead just maturity level, right? I, I think there's a lot of reasons not to do that. But um I think, you know, fifth through eighth grade is my biggest concern. There's, there's just no way to challenge a lot of kids.
And I think that's what our um research would suggest otherwise, recent research, about no way to challenge. I think that is something that would not align with what we are hearing from our students and from our um staff. And I, there might be some parents who would say that, but I think that uh deep down, I think the challenge, we do feel our students have been challenged, at least in this first year of implementation. I think that was the reflection. And I think the data, um, you know, the, the 2% of students who reported that boredom is a, is a data set that I think guides and, and what our teachers have reported seeing on a day-to-day basis in the classroom. But I certainly uh certainly understand, and, and I think that is a continued conversation that our uh teachers will be um having with regard to meeting the needs of those students and identifying those students who need that additional opportunity. And I think that's the important thing that we're wanting to bring to the surface here tonight in this conversation. tonight in this conversation, is that there are options for families to pursue, but we pursue those collectively and systematically, identifying those students currently.
How many students are grade accelerated in right now in middle school?
I don't, I don't have a specific data on that, but I do know that we have students that are identified for next year, eighth grade students who will be going on to the high school to take grade accelerated material, and we anticipate that to continue to be an experience that our students will access.
Director Mason, can I ask a question, just to clarify, because I haven't done the looking through that you stated with the, looking at neighboring districts and, and seeing a year behind. I'm wondering, you mentioned geometry as kind of like the...
Yeah, so when I looked at, like, several neighboring districts, I can name them if we need to, but it's sixth grade advanced option would be like a pre-algebra course that they would have. Seventh grade would be algebra and then eighth grade geometry. Like, that's pretty typical, I think, in a lot of neighboring districts. And we are, you know, those students are essentially a year behind unless they were able to grade accelerate.
So my question is, if you looked at there, like, if you looked at the cumulative offerings such as like this diagram shows?
Yeah.
Would that still suggest that our students are a year, would be a year behind?
Yeah, because they're entering high school with one less course essentially, right? I mean...
Well, I don't know that that's, I don't know that that's completely apples, apple, like, I hear if, if they're offering geometry a, a year ahead of what our offerings are, but I guess my question would be cumulatively, in the end, could you still say that our district students are one year behind? You know what I mean? I don't think that that's a, I think taking that, I see what you're saying, but I'm, I'm also curious...
The path to get to higher math is a little quicker, right? Because you're a year, I mean, again, you would enter ninth grade one year ahead of the curve, and I think, you know, we, I think it was Minnetonka who offers like multivariable calculus, which is even a next level. So there's, you know, and I think, again, we're talking about testing for college entrance exams in 10th, 11th grade before your 12th, right? So that, that year matters to some kids. Again, I was just like comparing other districts to see where they were at, and again, personally looking at options, but I, again, just curious why we weren't offering something similar.
Director Mason, I'm, I think the clarity, I think there might be clarity in the fact that when we made this change for pathways, we used to have, correct me if I'm wrong, Algebra I in seventh grade and then Algebra II in eighth grade. And the reason that I'm aware of this is I've heard from students who took Algebra II this year in 10th grade, said it was an exact same course that they took in eighth grade when they did take Algebra II back two years ago.
No, I do not recall that we've ever offered Algebra II at the eighth grade level.
We called it advanced math, though. It was called advanced math.
No, we've offered Algebra I and geometry at the eighth grade level, and a geometry course has always been deemed a high school course. And we've never offered, at the seventh grade level, we've only offered pre-algebra.
Okay, so when we made this change, just to clarify, what were the advanced options in sixth and seventh when we made the change? Because that might have been where the shift came.
Prior to the change?
Yeah.
We had advanced sixth, it was the same curriculum. We had pre-algebra seven, advanced, which was the same curriculum.
I think if I can just finish my, my, my thought is, I hear the, I hear what you're saying, and is there curric, you know, the questions that come in my head is, is their curriculum the same? I think that looking at the total picture is important, but I, I mean, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's just, when I'm, when I'm thinking about it, it's, again, maybe a snaps, a, a place in time, I don't know. Comparing district to district is very challenging.
Mary.
So, so I, I do teach and volunteer at other districts, including Minnetonka, and have experience at other districts, which I don't think is a apples-to-apples comparison. This is very typical of every single acceleration and pathway. Some schools do have the resources as well as kids coming out that do qualify for everything from honors Algebra I in sixth grade and are through probably calc BC by the time they're 10th grade. That is the actual exception path, and almost all schools offer those for those kids who are truly double accelerated. But the norm is the same for every school in the South Suburban Conference that I have been in. This is the typical one. I can also say with absolute confidence that all the advanced programs, sixth through eighth, were really the exact same one, more in-depth or supposedly more in-depth, and, but the exact same curriculum, because I did sit in those classrooms quite a bit. And by the way, it's the exact same way. So when you go to another school, they have an honors sixth grade math and honors seventh grade math or an advanced or whatever, it's, it's the same one. Right now, there's a lot of reasons why this pathway was created the way it was, and that's because the, the new math curriculum does have a lot more rigor in it, and it is based upon bridges, and many of the kids coming out of bridges or did, that did not have bridges are essentially accepting the experiential level of math a little bit differently. But if you look at the, the workbooks going through eighth grade, even the standard pathway, even though it says Algebra I, if you look through volumes two and three in eighth grade, I believe what I read and the, and actually the programs that I went through and, and actually tried the word problems, that's almost all algebra, matrices, probability, introduction to statistics, et cetera. So the CPM math actually doesn't just focus on Algebra I, but volumes two and three do have it in there, which our previous math curriculum didn't. So I would encourage parents who are concerned about it to actually meet with the math teachers and go through those books, but having experience and, and actually tutoring, helping and all that kind of stuff in the various programs throughout the conference as well as in Burnsville, Richfield, and a few other schools. This is the norm. And so I, our, nobody's behind a year. You know, and, and we, we've had very few kids, I think, six total in the past couple of years that were actually double accelerated is the number that I got. I don't know if that, if I remember that correctly.
Yeah, I think it, it has been typically in that range. I think our, next year, it's, it's either four or six. I'm, I'm blanking at the moment, but...
Right, and some of the other districts have had much higher numbers, but also, they also adopted a similar Bridges curriculum earlier than we did. And also, many of those higher numbers come out of, and one of the districts, Chinese acceleration and Chinese immersion. So it's not, it's nowhere near an apples-to-apples comparison.
So I guess my other comment was really just around the survey results. So, you know, I guess my concern is what we've, you know, seen as far as high-level bullets and, and the meetings, I went in and read each and every single comment of the student and the parent survey, and I think, you know, literally have handwritten notes of positives and negatives, and I, and I feel like, you know, overwhelmingly was the experience of the parents especially not positive. And, and I think in some instances, a lot of frustration. I appreciate the, the student comment in here, and I actually, you know, had to laugh at some of the comments because I do think the students actually really like the social aspect of the course, right? So that makes sense, but, and then I think, you know, just to be fair, today also was sent by a parent who must have data requested it, and I just did a quick AI and PDF, and the overall sentiment on, and the entire, you know, survey was overwhelmingly negative. It verbatim says, "Parents highlighting significant challenges, expressing concerns about their curriculum's impact on their learning, their confidence, and enjoyment of the subject." And I think just, again, caution on just highlighting things. I'm a person that I, I like to dig into details, and so, like I said, I sat and read everything, and then I just kind of sanity-checked it with AI because I was curious if I was, you know, trying to, being biased or something, but, you know, I think that it's important to highlight. The, the parent and student feedback is, is not positive with CPM so far. Hopefully that changes next year over time, I'm not sure, but, so again, just expressing concerns with overall the, the pathway and, and the feedback that we've gotten so far is, is not positive. My last question was just around the math vision, and I was curious, when was that written? Was that before our strategic plan?
Yes, it would have been before our strategic plan. Dr. Zumbusch, I was hoping you were coming to share some additional breakdown. I know we highlighted just a couple of data points here, but...
Yeah, just to revisit the Parent Guardian survey, there was negative responses definitely in that data set. Just wanted to remind everyone that when I removed all of the empty responses and de-duplicated responses, there is, the total response rate for parent caregivers was 12%. So just wanted to make sure we take that into consideration. It was not a representative sample of parents at large. And of that, there was actually 21 respondents that came from duplicate households, so it represented about 10% of our students. So I agree, there were negative responses in there, but just wanted to also remind what the response rate looked like for that survey.
Yep. Okay. Yeah.
Good.
I think that was most of them, I guess.
I think I had this, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I had the same question of the mash, math vision. When was that written? I thought I recall it was like 2018 or 19 from our last discussion.
No, it was written in 2021-22 school year.
So I think part of my concern with that is that since then, we have a new strategic plan, and I think our goal of what we've heard is that we were going to be relooking at these type of things that we have in our district and how do we realign them to our strategic plan? I'm also, you know, knowing that we're an ESTEM district and math is the M in, well, engineering and math. Engineering has a lot of mathematics in it, of course. Is this math vision applicable to, to our strategic plan, or does it align with our strategic plan?
I would say unequivocally, yes, this does align to our strategic plan. The math vision was not created just in a vacuum. It was created with best practices and research in terms of mathematical practices, also where the field is going, where, how, again, how we define proficiency. All of these things under here are directly aligned to our state's framework on math, making real-world world connections, having strong number sense. Those are not just things that we want to have happen, those are things that are the definition according to our state assessments that gets our students to that proficiency level. And when we're talking about academic excellence and getting to that increased proficiency level, all of these things need to happen. So I think constantly relooking at things with the new lens, but this is in clear alignment with our strategic plan and the way to get to that increased proficiency rate in terms of our academic outcomes are directly tied to these components.
And I would just say, my only challenge upon that is when you look at the one, two, three, four, five bullet points there, one of them, the very first one, I would agree, has some academic relevance to it, and the rest of it is very socially emotionally learning, develop, socially emotionally learning-driven, whether it's connections or persisting, which feels very social, emotional, real-world connections, social, emotional engagement and sharing and thinking, all very social, emotional. So knowing that our community was very loud and clear that academic excellence has to be on the forefront of every decision we make at this board table, I would just challenge, does this vision really align with our strategic plan?
I believe that it does. I would just like to say that bullets two through four are not social, emotional. Actually, when you're doing math problems, you have to be okay with making a mistake and learning from that mistake, otherwise it's what we call in engineering and math is failing forward, and it's one of the key concepts of the schools that we all like to say that are much better funded and that we would like to be like. So that is part of a key math problem, and, and we are going from solving for, for X in any one of these programs or just repeating it to actually determining what calculation and what formula solves a problem. And if you're not comfortable getting a wrong answer, because we know that the traditional way of learning that I think a lot of us grew up on is doing a math problem, looking in the back to see if we got it right, but not really understanding why the math problem exists. Industry needs people to do a lot different, and where the math standards have taken us is basically servicing where we need to have our kids actually graduate and be functional in that. So feeling safe taking risks means I'm okay taking, making a wrong answer because now I'm going to go to figure out how to, how to do it right, and that's part of learning. That's part of all learning, and, and we want them not to just look at the answer key in the back. Engage and share, so if I learned something one way and you figured out a problem the different way, that is part of your typical use of math in the real world and the rest of these. So trying to tie this to this SEL thing, that is not what that was. And I was personally part of, and not one that actually wrote any of them, but I was in the room when these math standards were made, and the critical thing of why our state math was going backwards was because we didn't have this built into the actual curriculums. And it's critical that we do.
Respectfully, there's a couple methods of thinking that way in a lot of studies that show otherwise, so that is an opinion, agree. But there are other opinions out there.
Yeah, and I would agree too, so...
Charles, I think we might need to be, to move on to the next topic.
Directors Zumbusch, do you have, and if you don't, I completely understand, you mentioned that there was only, right, basically when you broke it down, there's only 10% of parents that responded. Is that average of what you, what we normally get? Is that below average? Could you...
I think when you're looking at secondary responses from parents and caregivers, you tend to get lower response rates as students get older, so a lower response rate is typical. I think that the default as students get older is kind of if things are generally going fine, and, and I, I say that not out of my own, like, personal opinion, but we did have in-depth conversations with teachers as well to try and understand how many parents are reaching out, what does this look like, how often are we having these conversations? And looking at that from multiple lenses, and overall, the, the numbers of parent, and talking to Principal Kabushak, the number of parents really reaching out and, and asking or having like more of those in-depth conversations does equate kind of very similar to that 10%. So I think it's, it's very common as students get older, unless someone has a very extreme opinion, the, the engagement does drop in, in surveys like that.
Okay, so, so that, so that 10% is a, is a valid number, that's not extremely low, but it is about average? Is that, would you say that's...
It's not valid in the sense that you can't generalize it to the population at large. So when you look at surveys, you want, you know, upwards to that 80, 90% to say that I have a solid understanding of what the population at large is feeling or thinking about a certain topic. So in that sense, it's not valid from a generalizable standpoint. We can't say that that is the, the, the truth for the population at large, but it is a, I would say, a typical response rate for kind of that secondary feedback. So it kind of depends how you talk about validity.
Okay, Mary?
Yeah.
Last one.
Have we ever performed a survey on math before CPM to know if we have a baseline for what that response rate was?
No, I would say we, we haven't specific, many of these things, both the adoption of a vision statement as well as the piloting of resources, as well as gathering that feedback. Those are all new things that we've engaged in in the last... as well as gathering that feedback. Those are all new things that we've engaged in in the last four years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Can move on to Dr. Thomas's A&amp;I update?
And just as an update for the board and anybody here, we are monitoring the weather. We're fine. There's no severity, severe weather alerts, but just know that we are monitoring that as we go. Next 20 minutes will be heavy, but nothing significant outside of that. No tornado watches. Oh, yes, we are. I mean, yes, we are, but nothing advanced, nothing more than that. Yeah, sorry. Just a quick update.
Not warning, yeah.
Yeah, just a quick update on some of the A&amp;I. I think a couple of points here. Looking at how we may revision A&amp;I moving forward, we are in the, we have multi-year strategies that were tied to their approved plan and we're seeing those end metrics out to, to end for next year. And we'll be planning to do a different type of engagement as we rewrite this plan that's going to be more linked back to our teaching and learning committee to have more participate, participate, participation there as well as, as we look to bringing this forward in our finance committee. Again, I think how we've developed this plan through cross-sectional folks within our community, we have more formalized structures since this was convened and so that will be running forward throughout this upcoming school year as we make a new three-year revision to, uh, plan. I will say that with some of the changes, particularly in the role of the director, part of the impetus behind this was around how we can best utilize the resources in the current plan in its last year to earmark more resources for direct student support. And I just want to be very clear, that was the driver in that decision of mine to find ways that we could bring more resources directly to students to help accelerate the gap closing strategies based upon some of the information that we shared earlier in the presentation that's now tied to the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness. I think it's the new world's best workforce and, and that's where a lot of this lives in terms of reporting, et cetera. So in talking with the state, we have our current goals five and six with our elementary and secondary students' connection to schools. Is there, is the plugin for, for us to utilize academic achievement as a means to increase their connectedness to school? And so I'll be planning to reposition that administrative role to now hiring academic paras. Part of what we talked about earlier this evening around some of those instructional rounds was also bolstering our central services around our ability to statistically identify where the gaps exist at the greatest levels and then also find ways that we can identify who are the students who are contributing to that statistical level. We know we have many students we can support in different ways. We also know there are some that will statistically have a greater impact in terms of overall performance of our schools when we can identify those schools or those schools and students who need it most. The plan will be to create a more robust intervention cycle that's going to be at the school and developed in partnership with administration and that, any classroom teacher who touches that student in terms of their support in the classroom. That will be a combination of both pushing and pullout. And then we would couple some of that with some of our high dose tutoring that may happen outside of the school day. That would be something that the family could help get assistance in brokering. Our intervention cycles would center around our own curriculum and finding ways that we can accelerate their learning around that aspect. And then through our instructional rounds, this would be one of those data points that we would be monitoring so that we can regularly progress monitor, progress monitor our students to ensure they're making the types of growth and, and achievement in those intervention cycles. And then based upon their performance, we would cycle them in and out of these supports accordingly. But we believe that by bringing more direct student support, we're going to be able to accelerate some of the achievement of the students who we know statistically are falling into some of these gaps. And so that will be our plan moving forward. And, and again, that will be a partnership both between central office supports as well as our building. And so you'll see just our basic intervention cycle that we typically use, very similar to that. But again, looking at some other statistical measures and demographics that we would progress monitor to ensure that we can accelerate those closures of, of those gaps. So I want to give you that update in terms of how those resources from that role will be utilized. And then that would be one of the metrics that would be onto our reporting, our quarterly reporting to the board.
Any questions?
How will the paras be allocated? Are you doing one at like each level or?
We'll, through our gap analysis, that, yep, we're going to find two schools, no more than three schools that we, well, we know that there are two schools who have the greatest statistical gaps. And then within that, we're going to identify those students who are going to be contributing most and that's where we would deploy the academic paras. And, and then that would, you know, be the academic component. And then through our liaisons and such, we would also find any other wraparound supports that that student or that family might need to better build that network of support around that individual student.
Justice Jusso?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Thank you. I'm sorry if I missed it. Did you say, Dr. Thomas, that we're going to rewrite or just revise? And who is going to do that?
So, so this is a, this is a realignment of the budget for the administrator role that's no longer going to exist. What I was suggesting that we'll start this upcoming school year is we'll be working through our various committees that we currently have, namely our teaching and learning and then our finance committee to help develop a new three-year plan that will start fiscal year '26, '27 and go for three years. So we'll completely rewrite the plan, aligned completely to our strategic plan. Right now, this plan has three-year metrics that we've been monitoring and investing in. So we want to deliver that out for this last year. But because of the change of that director role, we, we have been supported by MDE to convert that into student-facing roles to support kids. So next year is just this modification of that position. Then also next year, to begin the fall of '26, we'll have a whole three-year comprehensive plan that we have to by statute rewrite every three years.
Correct. But we had a director do that. So what I'm asking is with the, since we don't have that person anymore, we, so our, we're going to ask our teaching and learning committee and our finance committee?
That, that will be, sorry, that, that work will still be led centrally here within our academic division. So, so right now, Dr. Warner and I are named on the actual plan as the ones who will facilitate the conversation around the development of a whole new three-year plan. And we are committing to use some of our internal structures that we've not used in the past to ensure that we are bringing data and what we've been doing around strategy to some committees to ensure that we are getting perspective from our community on the development of this new three-year cycle plan, which is requirement as well. And we have an existing structure through teaching and learning that by statute, we have opportunities to leverage that committee differently. And in some of it, in our reporting, that needs to actually be going to that teaching and learning committee as well, that historically we have not done. So that's something that will be a bit of a change there. And then obviously with the budget, this is a three-year, you know, just shy of a million dollars. We want to make sure that we're vetting how that is going to be spent, bringing that through our finance committee so that we can get some perspective as well. And then there would be, you know, school-based perspective. We're going to engage, you know, principals and things of that nature. But then ultimately, when it comes back before the board, the board can be assured that we've utilized some of our committee structures that we have in place in adhering to, you know, policy as well that governs this, governs this 3535, I'm sorry, 124D. That's kind of also housed in 3535. So you can see the structures that we have. We want to make sure that we're adhering to policy. We want to make sure that our teaching and learning committee has a opportunity to weigh in on the perspective of this plan, which by statute we need to utilize. And then three, our finance committee, obviously with any, anything that we're doing with, with our budget, that's something that we'd like to bring forward and something of this magnitude and their write-up of a new three-year plan is something that we would utilize that structure for. So that when it comes to the board, you will know that it's been vetted internally and through our board-facing committees to make a recommendation for you all to have discussion and then ultimately take action. And that would be something that would then begin in the fall of '26.
Lisa?
First of all, I'm really impressed you remembered that statute, 124D.862, Dr. Thomas.
I've been around for a few years.
Anyway, I have it right in front of me. My only question is, with the additional professional development funds that we as a board allocated with our budget, taking it out of the, I believe it was restricted funds, is there, I, I, it looks like we allocate about $90,000 if I read our plan correctly. I pulled it up from what we had when we submitted it. We allocate about $90,000 for professional development. Is there any opportunity there to reallocate those resources for direct student support?
Are you talking about the $90,000 that was in the plan itself?
Yes.
The integration plan? So some of that has been shifted to bringing additional support to the students by way of the tutoring. So some of that money has been shifted, proposed, proposing to be shifted, yep. And then, and then the other professional development would be utilized to help build the repertoire of our educators who are in the classroom still as well to ensure that they're getting the instructional strategy support. We might have a presenter come into a school as well. So some of that still needs to be, remain so that we can leverage some of that, you know, support through professional development, specifically as it aligns to the, the parameters of the grant or of the statute. So, yep.
So those are the, I just want to clarify. So we get the A&amp;I funds that are restricted?
Yes, and it's restricted to the parameters of the, of the 124D as well.
And you went to the MDA and made sure that we could take the original plan? Okay, so, yeah, so it's not like we took them out of our general fund.
No, no, that's a separate deal. Yeah, this is only pertaining.
Right, just want to make sure the language was correct because it was a little confusing.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll be adding this to the quarterly rollup to the board as well to see. And, and obviously we won't, we got to be careful because we're talking about small end sizes. So we want, we don't want to be mindful, we want to be mindful of not identifying, you know, identifiable information for students, but know that we will find ways to either code data or something so that we can give more of a regular report as our quarterlies to the board on where we're at with some of our gap analysis. And again, we'll be diving deeper into this as we launch this fall with all of our disaggregated data.
Sorry, I just have one quick question, but you're not rewriting the goals at all?
No.
So the goals will stay the same.
The goals stay the same.
The additional resources are reallocated.
Because this actually qualifies for a student's connectedness to their school environment.
Yeah.
And the more they are finding their success, the more connected that they can be. And so we'll just leverage that same goal. We don't have to rewrite any, any of the plan at this point and also not dish up some of the metrics that we've invested in the three-year cycle on. So we can see the realization of, you know, that three-year, that three-year goal.
Okay, good. All right, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. At this point, we will skip down to number 13 and I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session for the purposes of discussing teacher negotiations by Director Bullion.
Second.
By Director Mason. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries seven zero and we'll take a five here, quick to let everybody do what needs to be done.